I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the rule of law, where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Anyone online, Chip? Um, any public comment? We'll hold it for 30 seconds to give you a chance to think about it.
No public.
Well, you guys were late. There were like 50 people in here.
Oh, there was, yeah.
They gave you the five-minute rule, and they were out.
Uh, no public comment, so we'll move on to the TIF approval process. Is that Dom?
The council will recall that the, the council approved the substantial change application in October. Uh, the substantial change application teed up the bond vote. Um, Sarah's gonna walk through the financials up next. Um, but, um, since we left you all, it was forwarded to the Economic Progress Council. Uh, VFC hired an independent economist to review the application and give it a workout. Uh, there were six criteria that he looked at, but it all boiled down to, is it fiscally and financially viable? Uh, and determined that it was, quote, "a reasonable and executable plan that meets the requirements of continued fiscal viability." Their staff concurred and passed unanimously with VFC. So the final step in the process is voter approval in March. The final step before signing the warning is the TIF public information session, which Sarah will use through next. Unless there's any questions.
Who did that evaluation?
Jeff Carr.
Oh, yeah.
So Dom, someone's reached out to me, and, um, of course, Burlington's in the news again for their, some of their TIF issues. Uh, can we explain how we manage it maybe a little differently? So we're not gonna run into the same issues I think they had about appraisal issues or something like that. I think that was their latest one, the waterfront.
Well, I'm not, I don't wanna cast any disparities on Burlington, so, you know, I'm not familiar with the specifics of theirs. And from reading the newspapers, my impression generally that they did not follow the TIF-specific requirements. They followed more generally municipal law requirements. This isn't our first rodeo. We locked horns with the state auditor last time. Um, and when ultimately the state auditor can offer recommendations to the Vermont Economic Progress Council. When it went to VFC, VFC gave it the weight they thought it deserved, which wasn't anything. Uh, so, the, um, the auditor continues to have very outspoken animosity against TIF. And it's unfortunate that one of the costs of the benefits of TIF is you have to endure that. But it's so powerful that it's worth it. As we get there, as we get closer, the finance office and I have had a lot of conversations about how do we, how do we prepare for this? How do we know what's coming? And one of the things that we think, now that we know that it's coming, um, one of the things that we've learned is, um, the more you can keep TIF isolated and separate and paying for discreet elements of a project and not mixed in with the whole, the easier, Dom, it goes.
So just jumping on that. So the example would be adding on to your water and sewer as compared to a part of a specific project? Would that be an example of that?
Like if you've got 10 different funding sources in your, in your capital stacking, and you can instead of having TIF flow through all of them, if you can try to have it more discreet, so it's segregatable, that makes the audit easier. Um, the biggest thing, though, is we intend to hire an independent auditor before the state auditor gets here. And then to go through the process along with the state auditor. Um, to, the beginning of an audit is a kind of a roadmap to agree to the scope that they're looking at. And we'll bring an independent auditor to ride along in that process and provide that, that, this interesting perspective. And, you know, we will continue to do everything we can along the way to make it even cleaner than, you know, than it was last time. Last time, novel issues were raised like, um, the ability to use a capital reserve fund to cover your first three years, um, of debt service. And that had never been addressed before. It had never come up. And the state auditor punted it to the legislature, asked them to clarify it. And the legislature did for three years. And so it remained with VFC, and VFC, as part of this decision, said, "We thought last year the way St. Albans was doing it was okay, and we continue to think the way that we're doing it is okay." So they looked at it, that cash flow issue sort of prospectively and approving our substantial change. You know, I can't sit here and say that the auditor's not gonna come back in three years and say that he thinks we should have done it differently. In fact, I would bet that he will, because that's where you stand, depends on where you sit.
Is the, is the audit guaranteed, or is it a random?
It's, it's on schedule.
That's good.
You know, but, um, City St. Albans has never been able, has never been ordered to pay back any money. Burlington has.
I think the, I think the key is understanding that last time, uh, a lot, there, some of the things that were, that came out in the public were the opinion of the auditor against TIFs per se, as opposed to our record keeping.
They were 100% against TIF, so, you know, the, where you stand depends on where you sit. And if you're, and if you're determined to call into question a tool, the, you know, the-
That's legal.
That's legal and is authorized by the legislature and has been repeatedly praised by the agency of economic development. What a great opportunity to come in and, you know, imagine. I should stop there.
The state auditor should be neutral, I would think, just.
See, I mean, I just-
The state auditor has never been in favor of economic development programs across similar areas.
It's not unique to TIF.
Oh, interesting.
It's a, it's a job training program, job training program, uh, CDBG, Health, that, who's all that, so.
I will, I will 100% stay, stand up here and say St. Albans would not be where it is today without TIF. We would be, we would be where we were 15 years ago.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. And-
You know, I would go 16 years ago.
16, you're right. Okay, a lot, between 16 and 15.
So, that answer your question?
The auditor's chafe has more to do with, his perspective is informed by communities that, that don't have TIFs.
Yeah.
And his chafe is, not that it hasn't done great things for St. Albans. His chafe is that we have maximized the tool, and we have used it in a way that nobody else has ever done before. And he wants to stop.
Well, and, and he's-
From an equity perspective, do you think?
Not, not in the way that that term is used currently.
Okay, interesting.
He is also of the belief that the private sector would make all this happening without public support.
Absolutely not.
And that's not even, that's so far from the-
Somewhere in Vermont, he, and, you know, and if, but if you haven't had the experience that we had in 20 years before the TIF, and you didn't have the experience of trying to put together the deals that made it happen, and realizing how essential the TIF was, you know, there is evidence out there from your perspective.
Thanks, Dom.
Do you have anything else, Dom?
Any other questions?
Any other questions on, on the TIF? Is Sarah ready?
Sarah has questions.
The public is ready?
She's so excited, I bet.
Yes, I am. Waiting to be invited, uh, Mr. Mayor.
It's not the corum. You've learned, you've learned your lesson.
I will.
We'll chat after.
Okay. All right, so my part of this is to go through with you, uh, the notice to the voters, so the TIF information to the voters about the bond vote. And we have a very specific checklist of information provided by the state statutes and by VFC. And so the information is in your packet, and I'm going to walk through all of the information for you and for our possible future, future viewers.
Do you have another copy of that, because I forgot to bring my packet?
Two each there. In fact, I printed a dozen.
Thank you.
Just in case. Does anyone have any more?
Okay.
I'm so prepared, so.
Can I see one?
Absolutely. If I find this helpful, please. All right, so starting off right at the top, the amount of our final TIF bond issuance that will be considered on the March 2024 ballot is $11,400,000. This covers three specific projects. The largest component is $10 million for the Bellevue redevelopment project. We have $1,200,000 for the Federal Street multimodal connector, and $200,000 for the redevelopment of 45 Cayman Street, which is the old courthouse building. Up until this point, so not considering this new debt that has not yet been approved by voters, we have authorized and issued $21 million in TIF debt. That includes a $14,500,000 initial issuance. We had a $1.5 million issuance following that. $2.5 million for the Congress and Main project, $1 million for Fonda redevelopment, $1 million for Cayman Street, and $500,000 for the remediation and redevelopment of 100 to 120 Federal Street. For the $11.4 million that the voters will consider in March, if the voters approve that issuance, we will issue bond anticipation notes almost immediately, certainly before the end of March, which is the deadline to issue our TIF debt. And we will eventually secure a long-term bond through the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank for that $11.4 million, or the amount of it that, um, we end up using on these projects. That $11.4 appears again here. That's our total TIF principal that's going to be financed. And our estimated interest rate on a 20-year bond is 4.21%. With the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, any fees are incorporated into their interest rates. There will be no additional fees for the issuance. Of the $11.4 million, we expect to use up to $2.5 million in related costs. That $2.5 million of related costs are not in addition to the $11.4, they're incorporated therein. And those are for thing, those are for soft costs associated with, uh, the construction of redevelopment projects, such as legal, consulting, and shit like that. We expect that the annual debt service will be $854,504, which is a 20-year bond at 4.21%. And that will be paid for with the incremental, with the TIF increment. We are not planning any inter-fund borrowing. We are planning interim financing. As I mentioned previously, we will issue bond anticipation notes almost immediately following the vote, assuming that if the vote is a yes vote, we'll issue a full $11.4 million in bond anticipation notes. Using these funds, as I mentioned, we have three projects that we're going to be working on. And all of these, and these projects cover things such as land acquisition, brownfield remediation, utility improvements, construction of parking, site preparation, roadway, construction improvement, streetscaping, those professional services and related costs on the projects. The three specific projects, the Bellevue redevelopment project, which is the largest chunk, a total of $10 million, that project, we anticipate to be 100% financed with these TIF debt proceeds. And also the $200,000 going toward the 45 Cayman Street is all coming from TIF. The $1.2 million going to the Federal Street multimodal connector is a grant, grant match, or is it?
Mostly grant match.
Mostly grant match, and we anticipate that project to be a total of $1.9 million, and the dish, other funding sources for the difference. Our, our TIF financial plan assumes that there will be private development directly associated with these investments, and that that will add $15,827,500 incremental assessed property value. And that is directly associated with the projects that we're investing in here, is the courthouse and the Bellevue redevelopment project. Lastly, we are notifying voters this evening, and they will also be notified on the ballot, that if the, that these are ultimately general application bonds, and that if the tax increment received by the city from any of our tax sources, so from the municipal component or the component of the education tax that we receive as part of this program, if those are short, um, for paying the debt, or if they go down for whatever reason, that the city still is liable for the full payment of principal and interest on all of the TIF debt. Are there any questions?
This is the-
Mr. Hawkins, thank you for joining us.
Hello, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Uh, Sarah, Dom, one of you, this is the last chance to do, to do any increment in the TIF, correct?
This is the last chance to issue debt for the TIF.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, um, I just wanna say this is a huge, this would be, take a huge, um, pressure off some of the housing crunch we've seen with, with the housing from the Bellevue project. And I don't know how long we've been complaining about, uh, Federal Street and traffic on Main Street, so, and the looks of Federal Street as you go down. So this is our, our match to that, the money we received for that too, correct?
Yeah, especially that section of Federal Street.
Yeah.
Is the focus of this one.
Yeah, so I think this is a great opportunity to, uh, work on our housing crisis that we have, and work on some of our traffic congestion we have within the city. So it's really those two projects in itself, it's well worth it.
I think the fact that it's going to increase our property value by over $15 million, so we will make money in taxes on that. That's, that's really important to make sure people understand.
And ultimately, the ed fund will as well. So once the TIF, you know, we have 10 more years to retain increment from the, the school taxes, um, after this issuance. And then after that point, all of the growth in the grant list has been created by TIF. We'll revert back to the taxable grant list of both the, um, the school district and eventually the municipality when the debt's all paid off.
That's great.
Are, I should know this, but are bonds, um, refinancable?
Not by us, but the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank is regularly on the hunt for better interest rates, and they will often refinance them. Uh, we cannot pre, we cannot early pay them or prepay them or initiate a refinancing ourselves, but they often do.
And that, that savings is passed down to us?
It is, yes, yeah.
Any other, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions, uh, as of yet.
Anyone, Marie?
No.
I'm gonna go up, discussion a little bit. What is the timeline for the Federal Street, uh, approvals?
Based on the fact that we, we had the good fortune of getting the very large grants to do the whole connector, it might be that the sidewalk project gets integrated into that by the feds. They seem to want to combine the projects rather than have that one operate on its own. It's gonna be hard to keep them from being intermingled at all, anyway. So we're into the process of at least a year to do the final permitting and right away for the whole thing. And then, um, and then, uh, hopefully put it out through construction.
So it's pretty much-
I'd say a few more years.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Good.
But if we can still manage to do this sidewalk piece sooner, we will. In the meantime, we're gonna see some improvements associated with the Fonda site, with some of the other funding that we have.
And when we do Federal Street, is there going to be stormwater, wastewater separation? Or is that already all separated by the time it gets to Federal Street?
We'll do it if we find, if we find a way to do it that, that, that makes more sense in terms of these public funds than what, what we got into when we discovered how much we'd be just intermingled with the railroad. Which is why we pivoted to the idea of doing underground storage instead, closer to where the overflow is. But if there is ever a chance to do more significant separation that is worth the trouble we're gonna get into to do the project, then we'll do it. Like, we're gonna peel off an easy one on Stepford Street, if you remember. That's a little easy one. Um, but right now, really, the, the, the way you get more bang for your buck is doing just an, a underground storage project of the overflow, rather than getting in and trying to separate the stormwater and dealing with all the different utilities, and then what do you do with this newly separated stormwater? So, that's kinda where we ended up with the CSO right now.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the TIF.
You've been saying that for years, storage.
Um, any other questions on the TIF? Anything else we, you think we should know about, Sarah?
Not tonight?
How will we, how will we promote this or market it with our voters?
Same way, you know, we have, we have in the past, we'll, we'll draft some materials and, um, circulate them, uh, through social media and the newspaper. Sometimes we're taking out some advertising. I want, you know, we don't, we of course don't use any of the increment for that, because that's not a public improvement.
Very well said.
I, I recommend a Facebook Live session with the mayor. You can call in and ask questions.
Ask me anything.
Tim Smith?
Cause I have to get a Facebook account.
No, no, the city's got one. They'll set you right up.
So, I, you know, I think that the, uh, we'll get some messaging out similar to how, how they have in our past, folks.
We do like that in the hallway. I think those tend to work with the, with easels and the-
Yeah.
For election, I was gonna, uh, after looking at Sarah's draft that she did, maybe if we can simplify that and just like your 10 top points, and I can have something out in the hallway on election day, because I know that people are gonna ask and they're gonna wanna see that.
Is there a way to, do you have any, um, materials that show other projects we've done? So that people can say, oh, this, we, we did this, and this was, this was with TIF?
Yeah, yeah, we've got some nice photos to that effect.
The ones you brought to VFC, I think the quote was, "A picture's worth a thousand words, and these are worth 3,000." Speech was a front and back, before and after. They're quite impactful.
Right, no, that's, that's what people need to see.
Yeah, it was great to stand.
Nothing else for Sarah? Can I do Sarah?
Just a minute.
I'm gonna let her sit here for the rest of the meeting.
Um, so it's for the approval of the warrant for town meeting, and that, Nicole, do you wanna come up?
Nicole, you got a nice original, right? Uh, yes, I do. Do you guys all have a copy?
Yeah. We do.
I forgot to bring ours, but other than that.
I have the one for you guys to sign.
I have a copy in front of me, Nicole.
Perfect, so, and don't know if you guys want me to go through it. Uh, Sarah and Dom pretty much covered, uh, the TIF bonds. All right, we're short and sweet. Um, city budget, um-
0.6%?
No.
Hi, is it 0.6%?
Yes.
Yes.
0.6%?
0.6%.
$11 over the course of a year, correct?
Yeah.
On a $300,000 house?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For the city's portion.
For the city portion, for the city portion. Please look at the city portion and your school portion when looking at your tax bills.
The other, um, item on here is our elected positions. So we're looking for a mayor, uh, for the next two years. Council member for Ward 5 and for Ward 6. There's also two of the library trustees, um, that will also be on the ballot. You guys have any questions for me on it?
Move to approve the 2024 town meeting warning.
A second.
A motion and a second, motion by Chad, seconded by Trudy, to, uh, approve the town meeting warrant. Any other questions for Nicole? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank her for your work.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome. I'll see you Wednesday for your signature. Thank you.
And you're set for, um, is it too early for your volunteers for a drawing?
I sent out a list for my volunteers. Um, I haven't plugged anybody in. I should have enough. There's still some people I can reach out to, um, if I need some more.
And you're starting to get absentee ballot, I would imagine?
Um, I have the presidential ones in-house already, uh, after tonight, after Tim signs on Wednesday. I can submit for our local ballot, and then I will send out any absentees. We have about 30 requests right now. And all of them are, they were under the understanding that we're gonna wait for our local ballot, so I can send them all. They didn't lock us for the presidential.
So how do people make a request for an absentee ballot?
They give me a call or a chill. You can email us, and you can also go onto my voter page and request it there.
Okay, so quite a few ways.
Yep.
Perfect. Easy as just calling?
And they can walk right in and request them too.
Okay.
Once ballots will be delivered to me by February 14th.
Yep.
So anytime after that, they could also just walk in here and request them in person. They can come use council chambers if they wanna do it right then.
And bring it right to you.
And bring it back to me.
And primary date is when? August?
August 13th, the second Tuesday. And then November 15th.
Busy year this year for you.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Coming to a journey?
Before we, Chad, before you do that, uh, we still have our, our, our February meeting, right? We're doing that on February 12th?
Yep.
Okay.
Whatever.
All right.
Is it the, is it the 12th? Cause I'm in New York City, uh, on the 12th, and I'll have to zoom in again. Uh, or is it the following Monday?
No, it's 12th.
The 12th, okay.
Yeah.
The last time we're gonna see you, right, Chad?
Probably.
All goes well.
I was gonna say something else about your position, Tim, but, uh, you're, you're running, so I won't say anything.
Hoping for an upgrade, Tim. Hoping for an upgrade.
Tim, do you have anything from, uh, your ward or general comments?
Oh, no, nothing, nothing from my ward, where all is well. Except for, I, I'll, I'll make one little comment. Two things I had to do this week, uh, before I left to come down here. Uh, one is I actually locked my door. Uh, and I haven't had to do that in 62 years or 61 years. And the other thing I did is installed ring doorbells. Um, just because of the current status of the way things are going. So, uh, I really hope, uh, with the, you know, the budget and everything goes through. We need this police department stuff, uh, we need this, these officers. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's very problematic that I have to do that. But, uh, uh, there was been times when I, I didn't have to lock that door at all, uh, for many years of my life. And Tim, I'm sure you're the same way. Um, and now we're finding that we have to lock our car doors, our houses, and not only that, but have some type of surveillance, uh, to assist us when we're not at home.
Have you experienced something specific, or are you just, uh, in general, what's going on?
I've had some people, uh, walking through the yard. I've already been in contact with the police department who are, uh, moving very efficiently on it. Um, but I have had some, uh, neighbors with, uh, things that have been missing. Um, but I had two neighbors call me the second day I was down here. I've only been down here four days, um, coming back tomorrow, to say that, uh, there were people in my yard, uh, people walking through my yard, and, um, so that was a little disturbing. But, uh, I got everyone on camera now, uh, so, you know, it's not gonna bode well for them. So, you know, it's not gonna bode well for them, I don't think.
Yeah, across the street from me on Rudeley, so the tenant had her, had a package stolen off the board, so.
Yeah, what's nice is, you know, mine's on the side door, and it can shoot the neighbor's backyard. My neighbor across the street has one on his front door, which now he can look, he can look at his house and my house. And my, my neighbor down from me has one on their front door that can look around too, so we've got a little quadrant of, you know, of, of area that is got good surveillance now, so you know, those are, you know, it's an expense I didn't wanna have to go through, but it's, it's not very expensive, but it's just something that I'm really disturbed that I have to do now in that part of the city.
Trudy, Ethan?
Just some questions about the big eclipse. And people are seeing the sixty thousand visitors to St. Albans, and like, is that for real? Or is, like, is that, are that many people coming to St. Albans, and where will they park? And can we make sure that we take care of our little streets up in Messenger Street that struggle during the tractor parade?
So this is one, go ahead.
Are we getting some glasses? Because I need a beer.
Yes, we've done, I'll ramble on that for a little bit.
Yeah, because it's gonna be a big deal.
There's about fifteen thousand glasses that have been ordered that will be available through the schools, through the city hall. Arlie here is leading the downtown discussion, there's gonna be food booths and activities in the park. The, but the estimate, we, we, among the STEM challenge initiative board, we had a presenter from NASA come, and basically what she said was, take your population and double it twice, or let's say fourteen thousand between city and town, double it, you can expect twenty-eight thousand visitors to your community, which would be about the standard, I think, for the Maple Festival Parade.
Okay.
Or something along those lines. Not the, the initial, so, but we are right in the, the main, like, the longest timeframe for, for the eclipse, so and, and people could plan on coming here, but if it's gonna be a cloudy day, they will go, they will move to where the sun is, so they may drive out of Franklin County to find where the
So do I need to take some time off from work so I can get home?
Well, all the local, to that point, all the local schools are either early dismissal or closed.
Right, and ours are too, except not for staff, so I just, like, for people who are working and commuting from Burlington, are they gonna need to plan accordingly to even get into their own yard, like?
Yeah.
Like, for real?
Yeah, you might, you're gonna wanna, it's gonna be like just like planning your day around the tractor parade, like, the shutdown that's associated with
It's gonna be ten minutes.
What day is this?
But I don't, I'm not really packing for the tractor parade where we live. I can, just can't come to Main Street.
So the best viewing place is the top of the parking garage. Get them up there. On the tree-lined street, it's probably not gonna be a great viewing.
You can come to my house.
So the other piece of that is, Arlie is working with a committee with the downtown board. They're focused on, and, and they have sheriffs, city police, and state police in on the conversation, looking at logistics relative to traffic control, portlets, parking, recommended areas to go watch, like, recommended area would be the Collins Pearlie. Or the, the Bay, the Bay Park, so there's a lot of discussions going on now. There's, I've had a discussion with the, uh, Highgate Airport, because like in Bozeman, Montana, they had it two years ago, whatever. They had two hundred nineteen planes fly in on that day to watch the, so Highgate Airport is preparing for more, and that's out of our area, obviously, but
I just throw on this side of the parking, because that's, we hear a lot about parking in big events.
That is a conversation that's happening with city police and sheriff, or state, so.
But that's all?
Well?
Uh, Ward Five is pretty quiet so far, but it won't be this coming month, but I don't have anything further.
Chad?
Uh, I don't have much shit going on in Ward Six, but I will tell everyone here that I have always seen some of the other ballot items happening in some of the other towns around us, and some of those discussions that, that they're having. I do wanna say that I appreciate this board and our community's support when we need to do something, we're not looking at it as what we need today, we've always looked at it what we'll need in the future. And I appreciate that, because that is pretty contentious in some other local communities. And, you know, that's, we've always had a board that's looked, no matter who sits on these seats, that looks to the future, and the taxpayers and residents of the city here should be very fortunate for that, so thank you, Dom, thank you fellow council members, I really appreciate, really appreciate that. That's it.
I would add to that, when you talk about surrounding communities and what's on their ballot, I think the St. Albans City has been a catalyst for a lot of those projects, Highgate's looking at a Village Corps, senior housing, library, look at what happened in Swanton with the Ace Hardware Store and that type of stuff, they look at St. Albans, St. Albans can do it, why can't we, and so that's the attitude that a lot of towns, Ennisburg for that, for example, as well, so.
Alden's actually looking for a town manager, too.
Oh, they're really?
They're, they're discussing it, yep, 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 absolutely.
So I think that will be about ten out of our seventeen communities of Franklin County will have town administrators or town managers. Which is, ten years ago, it probably was four. That's all right. Marie?
Nothing, Ward Three is quiet, so that's a good thing.
Good, nope. I got a compliment from Jimmy Warner, how nice the city looks and stuff, and you can tell Marty, Manny, and the tree next to my house has been trimmed and everything else, and just a little bit more to cut off, and it's gone. That's it.
Good. So if no one has anything else, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Trudy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For coming, public, thank you for coming out today.